This is the Board of Education regular business meeting for which adequate notice under the open public meeting meetings law was provided by written notice of May 7th, 2008 through Carter News Echo Sentinel reporter, The Star Ledger and the clerks of the Borough Watchon Township of Long Hill and Warren. Do you have a roll call?
Mr. Binder?
Here.
Mr. Ballin?
Yes.
Phil Zarano?
Yep.
Specter?
Yes.
Horowitz?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
You.
Ms. Mandell?
Here.
Mr. Sun?
Dr. Yaggett?
Here.
Dr. Seelig?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here. The big one's over here. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the people of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Guided by our B.A., I have to get everybody's face in the same direction. Um, reports and presentations. Dr. Rader, do you have any comments?
No, I have no comments today.
Okay. Uh, I have one comment. Uh, the, uh, each of you got in your packet a copy of the ethics, the code of ethics to the board, and you also got a piece of paper that you need to sign that basically says you've received the copy of the Board of Ethics. If you have not, I would like you to do it now if you've not done it. I want to get this finished. It is a CUSAC requirement that we've had these things completed. So, it should be, it was blue originally, it was in the blue notes. Uh, if you have that one, fine. If not, uh, it'll be one in your packet. Right on this side. Right on this side.
One of your packets is white?
The one in the packet is white. So if you could please sign that, um, if you can't find one, I have an extra one right here.
Either.
While you're signing those, we'll move on to our business administrators' comments. And when you're done signing it, you can pass it over to him so he'll have a record of that. Thank you.
I have no comments, sir, Mr. President.
It's going to be quick. Dr. DeGanse.
Thank you, Dr. Seelig. For the past two weeks, we had advanced placement exams. Seven hundred and seventy-nine exams were administered by about four hundred and sixty kids, and all but three were completed in the two weeks. We have three makeups. We went from our APs to our Biology EOC exams. We only had, out of five hundred and seventy, seventy-five kids today, we only had seven kids absent for the exam, and that's tremendous. Last week, if you had the opportunity, our Arts Department, our climate performing Arts Department, put on four days of an arts festival, beginning on Wednesday with music, instrumental as well as vocal. On Thursday, we had a film festival, and on Friday and Saturday, we had dance and theater. It was just a very fine four days of entertainment. Thursday, our kids also were involved in teen arts down at RVCC, and they did extremely well. Saturday, we had the dedication of the Garden of Hope and all the landscape that has been done around the front of the building, and it was a very fine afternoon. On Sunday, I had the privilege of attending the NJSIAA Scholar Athlete Luncheon, where we celebrated the accomplishments of three hundred and fifteen Scholar Athletes throughout the state. Emily Shulyn was our representative this year. Tomorrow, again, I have the privilege of attending the Skyland Conference Scholar Athlete Luncheon, where we will celebrate the accomplishments of two athletes per school who have done well, not only athletically but academically. Our representatives are Alex Kong, who plays lacrosse and hockey, and Sue Schaefer, who plays basketball. And if you have an opportunity in two weeks, actually, it's moving quickly, next week, Wednesday, the 28th, Dr. Terrence Roberts will be here, one of the Little Rock High School nine, who will present to all of our students during the day, and will have a program for the community, seven o'clock, in our theater. That's all, Dr. Seelig.
Thank you very much. Questions? Let's move on to the student representatives' comments. Welcome this evening. Any comments or make up?
Uh, yes.
Tom, could you, just one sec, could you move the mic down towards M.C.?
Yeah.
Moves that far. Great.
We're going to be having a blood drive on June 5th to get people to donate blood and save some lives.
And we also have Powder Puff coming up sometime. The date hasn't been decided yet, but, um, that's like when the senior and junior girls get to play football, uh, flag football, and the males get to be the cheerleaders. So it's just a little fundraiser, a little activity for the seniors.
That should be sometime like early to mid-June before finals.
And, um, a couple of concerns from fellow students was concerning how freshmen are not able to opt out. Um, I think they're only allowed to opt out once throughout the year, and, uh, a lot of, current freshmen now are having issues with that due to like sports and other activities. They feel they should have more opportunities to opt out of gym.
Because of the time that they spend doing the sport, so they don't really feel they need the extra physical activity, because they are doing some to stay in shape, and the study hall gives them a nice time to do some homework that they couldn't do the night before, because they were at like track meet or an away game or something, something in that area.
Um, another concern was-
And in three weeks, they'll be sophomores.
Right. Well, and another, another concern was, uh, the practice rotating drop schedule that was scheduled for, uh, the senior, on Senior Cut Day, the day after prom. Uh, we just want to add that, that might be a problem, because there's going to be about 500 bodies missing, and it's not an accurate, uh, way to experiment the drop schedule. And a lot of students who also have science classes may not have labs that day due to the, what is it? The watch scheduling.
Due to the, yeah, block scheduling.
So, you should reschedule that.
Yeah. I haven't, so far, like, I haven't heard too much positive feedback about it, because people are really concerned about the lunch, it's just going to be very crowded, and they-
Well, not on Senior Cut Day.
Well, not on that day yet, because there won't be any seniors really. But, a lot of people are concerned about the lunch being so crowded, because not everyone really wants to eat in the hallways or in a classroom, because they like eating in the cafeteria and sitting down.
Uh, Dr. DeGanse, would you like to respond to the date chosen and the absence of students?
Do you want me to respond now?
Yes, please.
Wonderful. Um, normally, when we have our common lunch, there'll be four hundred students at the beginning of the lunch out in science class, and four hundred during the middle going into the afternoon session out. So without the seniors possibly not being there, it really reflects what accurately will happen all day next year. That's all, yeah.
Won't there still be kids doing science labs that day, though?
No. We created a schedule that there won't be science labs going into the lunch, because we wanted to have an accurate reflection of what the kids will actually do. And two, every one of our students will have a place to sit. Okay? So.
Good thinking. Any other comments or questions? You guys, do you have any other comments?
Um, we had some issues where we've been having events at school, like we had our action auction, for example, and sports have been booked in the gym, even though we book it like a month or two in advance. Or like, for example, a car wash, we booked in January, was superseded by the girls' lacrosse team. So we've kind of been put second priority almost to, like, student activities have been put second priority to like the sports teams and such, with getting facilities and dates for fundraisers. I think that's it for now.
All right. That sounds like an issue you should bring up with Dr. DeGanse.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, I'm sure he's taking notes on it.
Write that down, that's important.
Um, thank you very much.
No problem.
The, um, with that, we can move on to committee reports. We have a number of committee reports, and I, the count I have is six. Uh, so, um, we'll start with finance and operations. Robert, did you discuss?
Yeah, we did, thanks. Well, uh, we had our meeting a short while ago. Uh, just want to emphasize a few highlights. Um, one of, one of the, one of the things we're really trying to get our hands around is, uh, third-party sources of revenue, because that really is, uh, a critical aspect to funding, uh, additional projects around the school. Uh, we, Nick gave a report, there really was good news and not such good news. Uh, there's been a lot of difficulty, and if anyone has a suggestion, we appreciate it, in getting advertisers or advertisements, the, um, those boards for the baseball field. I think Nick reported that, there are four of them, that he's secured, I think the average cost was six or $700, per year, I guess, Bob?
Yeah.
Per year, right. Um, and we're going to put a couple of them, some were sold as being co-located on the football field and also, you know, on the baseball field. If you recall, we entered into a, an arrangement, uh, this year with a, with a company that put up the, uh, the fence on the baseball field, uh, with the, um, understanding that, you know, that the first-year revenues would go entirely to the high school, and the second, third, and fourth, or fifth year revenues, I don't know, it's a five-year deal, are split, you know, under some formula. It's, it's, it's very, very difficult. Nick, again, was going to try and reach out to that gentleman, if you recall, I don't know if he came in front of the full board, Bob, was it last year? You know?
It was a committee.
The committee, was it? SMG, or what was it, something? Did they, you know, the-
Do you have the name of that company?
Uh, not a-
The individual. And, um, he wasn't too enthusiastic. Nick's going to reach out to him again. This is really, when you're trying to sell this advertising space, it really, you need almost some local incredibly determined person who is banging on doors in Warren, Long Hill, Watchon, Greenbrook. Unfortunately, there are a lot of people banging on those same pizzerias and nail salons and Kings and, you know, everyone else for hitting them up for money. So it's, it's really a very, very difficult situation. We're, we're still trying to pursue that. The, the good news is, and we'll, I don't want to get into too much specifics, but there's a, a local business, um, has made a very, um, you know, very serious, uh, offer for a donation, it's a six-figure donation, which would be used to, for a very significant repair to our athletic fields, specifically the track. So it's something, hopefully by the next meeting, uh, finance meeting and then the full board meeting, we'd bring it for your consideration, but it's, it's really almost a manna from heaven, uh, in terms of the amount of money, uh, and what is being, uh, sought for the opportunity to return, really quite minimal. So that, that would be a phenomenal opportunity for, for the high school. Uh, we're also still talking in the early stages with a company regarding telecommunications antennas and the potential, um, and these aren't these big ugly cell towers, that's not what we're talking about, to be located, uh, you know, on, on the premise for companies like Verizon or T-Mobile. Um, so we're really trying to get a, a sense, or he's going to try and get a sense, of what the demand would be. And it could be, in terms of high-low opportunity, I'd say you could have a benchmark of probably $50,000 a year, swinging somewhat lower or somewhat higher. So, again, in looking for these third-party sources of funding or revenue, we're really trying to pursue every aspect. Um, I just want to spend, um, you know, briefly touch on two points. Pomptonian, the, the, the area that really needs to be, the, from a point of view of revenue, that really needs to be addressed, uh, we think, is, is to increase the usage, more, more kids buying food at the cafeteria, and we've, I think, really pretty much concluded with Pomptonian, that we have, we have a very, very low utilization of the food card. This is the card that the kids swipe, it's preloaded with a certain amount of money. Not only does it increase usage in the cafeteria, but also it speeds up, and that's one of the areas we've had some problems with, kids going through the lines. It's an easy pass, if you will, type of situation. And Tom, one of the things that we really spoke to, uh, is to make a big push this summer, in all the communications you have with the parents, you know, for, for kids signing, you know, coming back to school in the fall. And one of the things we did talk about, it's by no means ready for a recommendation, but perhaps to get some utilization, uh, the thought, you know, a hundred dollars gets you a hundred and ten dollars of food, some type of incentive, you know, really, you know, the extra $10 probably be a three or $4 food cost, that's it, to, to get that utilization up, because that really is, well, we think, you know, we're not in a position to raise prices, uh, we don't have more students coming in, which we think would increase the revenues in a significant way, but that, that really, we need to get that food card usage up, and that, that will speed kids through the lines and also drive up sales. Uh, so we're also trying to get some figures from Pomptonian, um, per capita food costs of students at other high schools, for example, Hundred and Central, which has, I think, a 70 or 80 percent penetration of that food card in their high school, and it's probably a direct relationship between the more kids who use that card to more money that's, that's spent. And then just the, the last issue I want to touch on very briefly is, uh, with Bob, Tim, and Pete, and Jerry, uh, we really want to focus on this year, looking at our transportation costs, and mostly that's the internal costs of operation, operating our buses, the maintenance costs, labor costs, the, the whole totality, really getting a handle on what does it cost us, and what alternatives might be, is there a better, more efficient way we, we can operate? I mean, neither, we don't have to spend much time, other than everyone knows, we, our buses use diesel fuel, and, uh, the price probably from last year to this year has probably gone up thirty-five, forty percent. So, I mean, it's touching, you know, personally, it touches all of us, but it touches the school as well and our transportation costs. So I think we really want to, uh, really get our, get our fingernails dirty in, in transportation costs, and really see what alternatives, what options, uh, there might be for, you know, going into next year, uh, because this, this year is really, you know, we're, Bob, we're, we're really into next year already. So, those are really, I think, the highlights of what we're, we talked about.
Okay, great. Any questions? Uh, with that, we'll move on to personnel.
Personnel committee met this morning. We talked about many of the items that are going to be on the agenda this evening, went through the new hires. I noticed that there's a revised resume from what you had received in your package, thank you very much. Um, I think there's also going to be two walk-in agenda items that'll be placed on later, but require some executive session discussion first.
Right.
So we'll be doing that. But a lot of what we talked about is intended, I think, was executive session material.
Is that, any questions? Can we move on to negotiations?
Uh, we couldn't meet this morning, because everyone else is meeting. So we're going to meet Wednesday morning, uh, and, and then Wednesday night with the teachers, things continue to move along, and, uh, hoping that in the next couple of meetings, we'll have some more progress to report.
Any questions? Buildings, grounds, questions?
All right. Okay. We met Friday, uh, we had a number of issues, one, uh, about the flooring in front, the tile floor, and we have, uh, we had a long discussion on that, um, and I see we have a walk-in tonight replacing D six-
And D seven.
D six and D seven.
D seven. Was the bid we got in on, on the floor, it didn't meet the spec, so therefore we're not accepting it, and we're going to go out.
We're going to have a, we're going to have a discussion on, on that in, it's like an session with our, with our board of directors.
All right. Um, another item was the DCA inspections. We're still having some problems with the, uh, DCA inspector they sent out, so we requested that they send in one individual who's most familiar with the site. They kept sending new people, and they reinvent the wheel, so they put the brakes on and they asked for, uh, the individual who's been coming on a regular basis, who knows the whole program, and, uh, can pick up where we left off. So, uh, with that said, the pit lift is the major issue. They've received all the paperwork and calculations, there's some minor issues. We're expecting that to be approved for floor level and stage level, uh, soon, very soon. Uh, they, they had clarified one or two things, and Don Fiore was going to take care of that. So hopefully, by the summer, we'll have that to use. We can't use it at the below grade, below floor level because of the stair issue, the egress, and Don does have a feeling on how we could address that. So, we're, after we get the approval for those two levels, then we'll proceed to try to get the lowest level. Um, there's, um, another thing that we're looking into is the TV studio equipment. Tim, did we get a list of that equipment?
Yeah, I, I do have a list, if, if it's needed by the board. There's about three or four items.
And, uh, that was mostly, uh, a couple of computers, it's just cameras and, uh-
Yeah, the computer preloaded with the software, uh, two cameras, and, um-
Kind of switching, video switching, or some kind of a mixer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A light board, I guess, or a video, one of those.
Video switch.
Thank you.
Right. And, uh, so that, that's another item that we have to go out for bid on. Um, there was an issue with lockers throughout the, the new addition, that's going to be handled over the summer. If they can't fix, it's in the door assembly, if they can't fix it, they're going to replace the doors. Uh, that'll happen over the summer, so we don't have any downtime or anything like that to get it done. They're already gearing up for it. Um, there's, did they ever get to the fire loop? Do we have a leak?
Not, not a hundred percent sure. I, I know that they were supposed to come in, I don't know if they ever did.
Okay. I think today they were supposed to be here, but-
Yeah, I'm not so sure.
If it didn't happen today, there's a small, a, a regular leak, it's small now, but we don't want it to grow. You're supposed to, uh, dig that up and repair it. Uh, that's the, in the, uh, fire hydrant loop around the school. Um, we had ACT, the Fire Alarm Company, come in and do an inspection on the south building. They're going to submit a report, and, uh, we're, we pair of, a number of items that have to be fixed or replaced, and they're going to present a proposal with Tim. Uh, there's also a Honeywell Instant Alert System that we're looking into, and we're going to discuss in, uh, Community Relations to, um, we're going to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
The Honeywell what?
It's a Instant Alert System.
Okay.
For emergency.
It's an alert system for emergencies and other type.
Like text messaging and that kind of thing?
More or less. Yeah, it's, creates a different, a lot of different options for parents. Uh, this is something at the Building and Grounds Committee, that's the thing I couldn't remember this morning.
Okay.
Has to refer to the, uh-
Right.
It sounds like a great development.
Yeah. Didn't we buy something last year, remember something like six or $7,000 with-
Yes.
Broadcast, uh, Tom, was that-
Yes.
Text messages or voicemail, or what?
Was that phone?
Phone. It was phone, too.
This one has more options, but it's something that we need to, we'll bring it through the Communications Group.
Community Relations.
Community Relations, my apologies.
So it's going to be discussed further in Community Relations. Um, and then we had a, a few sewer issues throughout the campus that have cropped up with the rainy weather and all. Uh, they're all being checked out, uh, between Russ and Chris Pick, they're, they're all over it, and, uh-
John Suarez.
Huh?
And John Suarez.
And John, right? That's correct. Um, the one thing being is the snack shack out on a football field, the drain drains directly out into the, uh, back of the campus, so we have to address that and get that fixed in some way, and Chris Pick is looking for a, uh, eco-environmental, uh, system that can be used for that, so. Um, I believe, oh, the theater sound system, um, we discussed that, the equipment, and made sure that we had, uh, some electrical cost into that, so make sure when the equipment arrives, we'll have the power there to boot it up. Uh, and that was about, did I miss that? Good, good. Jerry says I did good.
Any question? All right. I'll cover policy. The Policy Committee meeting, Policy Committee met on May 12th, we started our discussion with facility's use, a familiar, well-worn policy that we continue to work on to try to get it ready. Uh, we met with, and as we told you the last time, we, we're going to bring, we're going to talk to the various, uh, rec departments from the communities to make sure that we're in line with things that they're trying to do, and so we can provide some level of consistency across the towns. Uh, so we met with, uh, Mrs. Adrienne Stewart, Commissioner of Warren Township Recreation. She shared with us what things they're trying to do within Warren, and the usage of the fields and the gyms, and the prioritization that they're adopting for that, as well as then the way that they're trying to schedule it, and also then the charge-out rate for some of those fields. They're also looking at things like, I mean, their insistence on people using permits and having permits available that can be shown to people when, uh, when the fields are being used, applications having to be received 60 days in advance, which is similar to what we had in ours, I think we had 60 or 90 days in ours, um, and how they do the scheduling, um, for, uh, sports, so that it's, those sports that are within the season have first priority over the, over the facilities. Um, and then also, um, they talked about the indoor facilities, which are primarily under the jurisdiction of the Board of Education, if you know anymore, as far as we understand and she understands it, and that's a two-step process that we go through. They have, uh, the same kind of, uh, scheduling groupings, kind of, that we have, they have said that 66 percent, or basically two-thirds of the children participating, have to be for Warren, and if they are, then they're considering, they're in discussion about the fees for that, or not charging at all. Uh, they do, they do something that you may well want to consider, which is they require coaches, as well as all those who are working with the students, to be involved, or the participants, to be, uh, make sure, just to make sure that they've been fingerprinted and to go through the necessary criminal background check, as well as then to have the Rutgers Safety Course equivalent. Um, which would probably be a good idea for us to require that with our own policy, um, as a requirement. It's not that we're going to, we can't administer this thing, but we can require that people have those as a requirement to be using our facilities. Um, so we'll continue the, uh, they're also working on a rate, a fee schedule for some of the fields, and we'll be getting that from them. We'll continue our discussions with them, as well as reaching out to some of the, some of the other towns with regard to how they're approaching the use of facilities in their community. Uh, we talked briefly about the employment of the Teaching Staff members, which is policy 3125. Do you remember, we pulled that? Uh, we were modifying that to include the nepotism clause, which we put in for the staff, uh, policy. Uh, when we read it at the board meeting, if you recall correctly, nepotism language had raised some questions, so we're in the process of rewriting that, and then we got into a very long debate about whether it applies to full or part-time employees with regard to nepotism, and what would that imply with regard to, like, hiring summer students, or students in the summer, perhaps children of faculty members or things like that. And when the policy was written originally, it would have excluded them, and the question to the board was kind of whether we really wanted to do that or not, so. Um, Tim recommended that we take a look at the Montgomery Board of Education policy, which they have, uh, adopted language that is pretty good, so we're going to take a look at that and see if that will meet our needs. So we're, this whole issue centers around really part or full-time, and who would be considered, I mean, who would become part of the nepotism policy, that is, if you're a full-time employee, or if you're a part-time employee, and if you're then a, uh, if the sibling or the relative is part-time or full-time, so that still has to be resolved. So, at least, it's going to come to this board, probably not the next meeting, maybe one after that, for consideration, for the first reading. Uh, we talked about the Conference of Equity Plan, that's going to, this was at the, now moving forward on the second reading, we'll bring that back to you on June 4th. Uh, we thought that this would be a fairly busy meeting tonight. And then lastly, the Equal Employment Opportunity, which we had pulled because of some of the language in there, we wanted to re, take another look at that, so, uh, we've rewritten that, we're going to give it to you, Jerry, the Personnel Committee, to take a look at and notice some of the issues that you're dealing with. We're going to give it to you, Jerry, and the Personnel Committee to take a look at it and notice some issues that you're dealing with there also. So with that, that's kind of the policy. Any questions? Anybody on the committee have anything else they want to add? Okay, we can move on to the 50th Anniversary.
I think I report on the meeting of the Anniversary Committee, which occurred on May 12th. And the meeting was pretty much dedicated to discussions on the Anniversary Garden Committee. And they had raised a little over $11,000. And they were planning a dedication of the garden on the 17th of May, last Saturday. And I think Mr. Selig attended regarding dedication. I'd like to ask you if you would report on that.
I did attend the garden dedication ceremony. It was very nicely done ceremony. Dr. DeGanse was the master of ceremonies. There was both the garden interior area as well as the garden exterior area was opened up. And we'd have to thank everybody who participated in one, raising all the funds. As well as in all the various groups that participated in trying to make sure that the plans were all put in an appropriate way around the building. If you look at the front of the building though, it's made a pretty significant improvement in the appearance of the front of the building. I would be remiss if I didn't thank our Buildings and Grounds Group. We spent a lot of time and effort trying to help coordinate that activity. As well as in the various volunteer groups, the Watchon Garden Club and the people as well as within the departments here, Doc Brown, Martha Bloomberg, well, Chair, one of the committees there. And then the committee members who are on the 50th Anniversary Committee. The, some of the plants were donated by the Watchon, by the great swamp greenhouses. Just express appreciation. We had a couple of students here, three students here, who provided the violin and piano. It was really rather nice to sit out there because if you remember Sunday, or Saturday afternoon, it was at noon. It was a beautiful sunny day, so it was really a very, very nice ceremony. The pianist was Doris Lee and the violinists were Annie Yang and Karen Song for the violinists. And you have in your packet the agenda, as well as in comments that were made by Mr. Pete, Dr. Peterson, right? Who has been designated as District Historian. And to hear, he's been here since it first opened. To hear some of the dialogue, you might want to read his comments just about the nature of the gardens in the school over the last 50 years is kind of interesting, so... Any questions or any other comments?
The only, Tom, I'd like, enjoy the gardens as you come in the main entrance. Look to your right as you're coming in and you'll see the gardens. And they really look spectacular for an area that really looked semi-blighted prior to the gardens, so...
You could take out the word "semi."
Okay, blighted, I didn't want to be too...
Is anyone writing letters of gratitude to all the people you just mentioned?
I'm not sure, but I think it's a great idea and we should do that.
You know, the one thing to pick up on that, you know, and it's fantastic, $11,000 raised. It's raising money, there's so many outstanding opportunities for people to give money today. One of the things, Tom, that maybe we could think about is next year. I'm not saying this is the ideal way to do it, but just a thought. At one of the back-to-school nights, if everyone thinks it might be an appropriate idea, to have an informational desk, whether some of us could man it or whoever, the garden club. And for, you know, that's such a great evening because you have hundreds of parents, maybe, you know, many hundreds of parents coming through. And with the idea that if we could print up some type of, you know, if you'd like to make a donation for a tree or a shrub, you know, $50 for this, $25, $100, or, you know, whatever. And, you know, it can sort of, no pun intended, giving life and giving some legs to this, that it's not just, you know, I mean, there's always more areas, you know, to landscape. So, I mean, this could be part of a little bit of an ongoing effort, you know, over the course of, you know, years. So ultimately, three, four years, you know, we've really landscaped or shrubbed out, you know, more complete areas of the high school.
This is a discussion, I think, that perhaps finance, I'm not even sure where else it can go. But very often the parents, if you wanted to make a tribute, certainly gone through this, called Mike Towne. Asked if they need any more benches, they said they couldn't possibly use any more benches. There are more, they said there are more people who call the borough for an anniversary or maybe a memorial. And they don't know where to put some of the money. And that might be a way, if we can think of a rather discreet way of including that, that we have these different areas in which you could support our students.
You know, to Sandy's point also, you know, towards graduation, if we had something in place now would be an ideal, you know, for the class that's graduating, for the parents to think, you know, you have a little plaque under, whatever it is, you know, your kid's graduating, you know, to, you know, what, hopefully, you know, you've had fond memories, you know, four years spent here at the high school to, you know, to make a donation for a shrub or for benches or whatever it is. I mean, you know, landscaping, you know, outside that, and also, you know, we have a lot of talented kids in our art department. I don't know if we do sculpture, but boy, to ask, that'd be a wonderful thing if the kids could make a sculpture, you know, that could, you know, be placed in front of the school as well. Yeah, so there are a lot of opportunities. I mean, I think it's just that Sandy's point also, that it's just, you know, an ongoing recognition tribute type of thing.
This is worth a committee to study. I've donated trees here, little packs here on the school. I don't know if they still exist, but we have had underground. You have to know that you can call the school and do this. So I think it's worth a study because money and fortune is tight, so...
Maybe the Community Relations Group could take a look at that and see if there's something that could be a reach out.
I was thinking the same thing here.
We have a that.
Okay, thank you. I think with that, unless there's some other comments, we can come to close on the committee reports.
I have some comments.
I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Yes, you did. Well, um...
Did you guys learn on my list of, you were asterisked on the agenda, so...
I wanted to speak on the District Curriculum Committee. I talked about the Teacher Curriculum Committee and as of now, we're going to be calling it the District Curriculum Committee, which is a teacher from each department. There's student representation, PTO representation on this committee. And they had their last meeting last Friday. I went to that meeting and what I had put in our board packets was the handouts from that meeting, which I thought were very important for, you know, the rest of the board members to understand how curriculum gets introduced. And there's this handout in your folders. And basically, the way it happens is that a new course or a change in curriculum would first go to this District Curriculum Committee. And it's an advisory committee. And then there's a hierarchy in here as to where things go. Then from there, it goes to Cabinet, then the Board of Education Curriculum Committee, and then presented to the board as a whole. And that's how the flow of information goes in terms of curriculum. But I, you know, I went to a number of the meetings this year. I thought it was a very productive year. And there's a summary of what was accomplished in this committee. And also the information on how courses get introduced. So the information is here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. And I want to thank all the staff and residents that are on this committee and the students that go to the committee. And, you know, for all the work that they do over the years in this committee.
On the basis of that curriculum committee, which has been in existence, was one of the unique things that the school did way back. There was a point in which we would get their minutes. We would always have a representative go, or we would always try to have a representative go to curriculum committee meetings, which is still probably on Thursday afternoons or whenever they are. And then they would give us a little synopsis and just written.
Well, I, that's what we did. We did have, I think we did have the minutes included in at least one, in prior, in prior board packets.
In one, the last meeting before this one.
Right, I don't know, I don't believe that the minutes for this meeting are done yet, but I think that would be...
It doesn't have to be timely, but it's a good conduit from the teachers' interest in curriculum to the board. They were always very grateful when they had board people. It seemed to me that they were very grateful to have a board conduit for them. It would be nice just to have a feeling. And we don't have to make it personal, make a committee report. She may not make that. It's not, not too many people here can make a Thursday afternoon during school hours. So that if they would just give us a summary of what they're doing, what they'd like the board to know about, you could ask that if it's not an imposition on them.
I think that's, that's going to happen, that's already in motion. So it's great.
Okay, at the risk of having missed somebody else, I apologize to you because you did mention to me this morning that you wanted to talk about that, so... We'll move on to our first presentation of the evening. Do you want to introduce it?
Yes, please. And before we move in to that, I would like to tell you that the robotics presentation will not be presented tonight. We rescheduled it for the meetings in June. And we'll get back to you as that comes in. And the science exploration project is not scheduled for tonight. You will find a written document in your packet that represents what we were going to present. So it may read a little differently than you might expect. And we will revisit that through the curriculum committee procedures shortly. Our first presentation tonight is the update on emergency preparedness. Steve Davis is presenting with Chief William Stahl, who is now Critical Infrastructure Coordinator for the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office. And Chief Russell Leffert.
Some handle.
Some title. Steve?
Good evening. Every year, or at least once a year, we try and bring some updated information as to what's new in the industry, what some current needs are in the district, Somerset County area. And it's very important that these two gentlemen are here. And the reason they're here is I speak with these gentlemen probably Chief Leffert three or four times a week, Chief Stahl once or twice a week. Just to find out what's going on in the industry as far as little things. I asked Chief Leffert current practice in lockdowns, windows up, windows down, lights on, lights off. Because it changes as tactics with recovery and evacuations and lockdowns take place across the nation. They learn by mistakes, so I keep in touch with him. Chief Stahl, I mean, some of the strangest discussions we have background. We had a discussion on the storage of fertilizer earlier this week. Because what's fertilizer used for in the industry? Bombs. So we had, you know, we touched base on stuff like that. Several new developments have occurred since the last Emergency Preparedness update that prompts me to meet with you tonight. The first thing is that the state of New Jersey, meaning the Attorney General's Office and the Commissioner of Education, recommended to all school districts that they tweak their crisis management plans to include things other than just locking down evacuations, bomb threats, fire drills and such. So with the help of several outside agencies and guidance from them, I've written a manual that's going to be used to train our faculty, staff in little increments. Because if you give it to them all at once, first of all, it makes you paranoid. Second of all, it's a lot of information to take in. Areas that we're going to be training in would be emergency response to suspicious powders. Most popular being anthrax. What if somebody drops powder in your classroom and yells anthrax? What do you do? Emergency lockdown procedures, we do that already, but that's included. Evacuations procedures, we do that already. An emergency notification roster has been incorporated into our plan now where no one has to look up anything. We have everybody from priests to officer of emergency management phone numbers that are disposable. And we, are disposable, we can take them with us. Smallpox outbreak, we are one of the designations here in Somerset County for a vaccination site should smallpox outbreak take place. I realize that's remote, but it's something we needed to discuss. Our response in case of a chemical agent released at school. That also includes Route 78. Should a tanker flip over there and expose it to some airborne pathogen, we have a responsibility and we'll instruct the faculty, staff as to handle that. Just as bizarre, what could happen is a radiological emergency. There's a policy on that. Bomb threats, we already do. Active shooter, armed attack, we already do that as well. Sheltering in place is going to be something new. That's if we have to stay here for a while. That has to do with storing food, water. And I work a lot with Anne Marie from Food Services on that. The second area that's changed a little bit is our memorandum of understanding between law enforcement and the school district, which allows us to trade information and work hand-in-hand, is a Attorney General's driven document. And every year, they tweak it. This year, they made a couple of changes to that. Some are of benefit to law enforcement, some of them are of benefit to us. They all in some way, shape or form benefit the child. The first thing is that they've made it mandatory for this school district to notify DIFIS for any unexplained absence of five days or more. So, and you automatically notify DIFIS. That was not mandatory under state law before it is now. It also makes it mandatory to notify police and DIFIS of any suspected case of neglect or child abuse. It sounds odd, but it was almost voluntary before. Now it's mandatory. And it places you at a civil risk if you don't report it. So that's a good thing for children. Another item that they changed in memorandum of understanding statewide is that law enforcement no longer needs parental permission to interview a child at school if the child is not the target of investigation. What that means, if the child is a witness or a victim, parental notification is not needed before they speak with that. And that's statewide, that just changed. If the person's a suspect, there's no interview. Interviews are taken place with the parent. The third item, we're going to reinforce a current practice of what we do now here at Watchon Hills and have since I've come here. Last time we had to invoke this was four years ago. And that is what we do to notify outside personnel or outside people using our fields or band area in case there was any emergency within distance of our adjacent property line. The example I'll give is four years ago, they had a report of a camouflaged individual in the Route 78 corridor with a rifle. This plan, while not publicized, went into practice the same as it would tomorrow. I armed myself, being licensed to carry a weapon with the permission of the superintendent of schools and posted myself at the perimeter. At the same time, Warren police came here and took up the perimeter with their patrol cars. At the same time, we removed all students and faculty from any of our fields and kept them inside. We kept gym classes inside, we kept band practice inside. Until that situation was cleared, that's what we do. After hours, what happens is the police make a notification. The police will dispatch a Warren police car or a surrounding town police car, if they're available, to that area and tell people what to do, whether to go inside, stay outside, seek shelter, and for how long. As was just previously mentioned, the district is looking to contract with Honeywell, if possible, to provide what's called a mass notification system. The reason why this is an important improvement over the system they have now. This will allow us to, if supplied to us, email, telephones, text phones, whichever, whatever the parent tells us. You, I want you to text my phone, my house, and my computer, whatever they tell us, whatever they supply us. Of just about anything. Anything from a bus that's broken down and your child will be late for getting home. To, this is Mr. Davies, we're in the process of a Priority One lockdown drill at Watchon Hills Regional High School. There is no emergency, but we just wanted you to know that we're having it. That's at snowy, snow days, closings, this can all be accomplished through this new system. Does not rely totally on someone answering the phone or getting a message. It's instant. Many of the college campuses are now going to this. My daughter was just told that she's got to supply her telephone information as well as I do. And universities use this system to instantly text people of the situation that's arisen on campus. It's saved a lot of lives so far. During a recent lockdown drill about two weeks ago, we came to find out some shortcomings of our PA system. There are areas of the school that did not know that a lockdown drill was in effect because either they had their door closed interviewing a student or they were in a part of the building such as a locker room or a training room that wasn't originally equipped with a PA system. So I'm getting quotes as to how much it would cost to make this system more effective. And while I'm optimistic, we just have to wait. There is a safe and secure federal grant that is coming due very, very quickly that I'm working with one of Chief Leffert's men on to see if we could get some funding to further this project. This would include outside notification of persons by public address system that would be switchable on and off. During the construction phase, the outside speakers that were used here at Watchon Hills were cut off. And that's because the new system is not switchable. In other words, you can't turn it off outside. And that would be annoying to the local community. I'm looking to have those speakers restored and have them switchable so that in any event of emergency, you flip a switch, every field, including the stadium, would know there's something going on in this building. And the last thing is the communication between these gentlemen and myself and these outside agencies will continue because this district is committed to providing the highest level of protection to this campus. And that's why, once a year at least, we bring you these updates. I thank you very much for your time.
Steve?
Any questions?
Yeah. Steve, you know, you most said kids in college, and Chief Stahl does, and you do, and, you know, a lot of us do. You go to the college campuses and you see the, usually like blue lights, the boxes on campus, you know? Where if a kid is walking around and if there's a problem, they just go over, it's an emergency box, you know? Seen those? I mean, is that something, I mean, we have a pretty, what do we have, 70 acres here? You know, we have the lower fields. And I mean, is that something that maybe merits... I don't know if you've looked at it, merits some investigation or discussion, you know, thinking whether it would be a good thing to have lower fields? I mean, wherever you felt they should be strategically placed outside the football field, and, you know, we have a big campus, that if, you know, if one of our students, you know, felt there was some type of threat generalized or specifically to him or her, you know, they pull that box and it, you know, triggers an alarm to that box, and you and/or, you know, Chief Leffert, you know, could take an appropriate action.
It's an interesting concept that's used on colleges, and the only difference I seen, I see rather, is the age of the clientele. I would imagine on campuses, the systems are probably less prone to false or prank alarms. My only concern at a high school would be that. What I could do is find out what other large campuses do. One thing I would like to do here eventually, as we get these internal TVs online, is when I went to my daughter's college last time, they had recently had attempted abduction at one of the dorms, and they had a warning flashing on this thing telling people what was going on. So, I mean, we could use that here for less urgent messages, but in order to reach the students about certain things, about unsafe practices, unsafe driving practices, the hazards of leaving school during school, accidents that occur, and such like that. But with regard to the blue lights, that's something I could definitely inquire about.
Steve, one of, I think you weren't at the meeting, we raised this, I mean, I think you, you know, mentioned to Lou in Building and Grounds, whether or not you think, and I'll ask you because you're here, whether, you know, I mean, you've all been here and you've seen people, maybe especially kids, going pretty fast through parking lots. I mean, do you think, you know, speed bumps would be, you know, helpful?
Absolutely.
So is that something that you, you know, would want to see installed that, where you would think would be strategic areas?
Yeah. There are two major roadways and one minor roadway where they would be helpful in slowing a lot of traffic down. One thing it would also do, if you think about it, is in the front, discourage parents from dropping off in that bus round, because no one's going to want to go over the bumps. The hue and cry was always about plowing, but with a new facilities manager that started today, I'm hoping the view may be a little different, or there's a way around it. Maybe we can mark them so they would know when to raise the plow, or no damage would be done to the plow. I definitely think it's a worthwhile situation. That topic came up this week.
So maybe you could report back to us, or just go ahead and do it, and then, you know, report back to Lou, or whatever, you know, to undertake, you know, what would be involved in our support in making that happen?
I could do it through Dr. Rader, or Mr. Cy communicate back to you.
Thank you.
Bernie, you start.
I had a question. Is there anything new in the Wi-Fi technology that will allow us to create like a city of our own here for two-way communications? For instance, if you had a video camera down in each of the parking lots, that without having to wire it and go to that expense, is there something that small towns use that we could put up on one of our tall poles out here, that would let us to have two-way communications very cheaply, and put some cameras in to really look at more parts of the school? I've always worried about kids leaving at lunch, and we have virtually no way of knowing if anybody leaves, or we're lucky if we do. We don't know what's going on in the parking lots. If we could somehow have a cheap communications, you know, technology, we could do that probably a lot cheaper than we would have thought about four years ago.
Well, in this day and age of wireless, I don't see why it couldn't be done, and I don't know what the cost would be, but, I mean, it certainly would be a welcome addition to any system we have.
I know about three years ago, there was some talk of having like, in a single box, you could really wire your little town, and what we have here is a little town.
Point well taken.
Another thing to look at.
Jared?
Oh, we're talking about this document here, right? That's part of this, what we're discussing, the crisis management?
I don't think there's any.
No, I'm just saying, one of the things I noticed, as you mentioned, we have a new Director of Operations, and I didn't see him included, and maybe you can just make sure that, you know, his role now becomes integrated to this.
Right. What I will do is, I'm going to sit down with him this week, and we'll integrate his role, and then, and I'll put that in memo to him. And then every August, and the reason I wait till August, because we have personnel changes right up to the last minute in the summer, that document gets revised, and then his name would go in there and memorialize it, as well as the outside notification procedure.
I have another question. This is Priority One that you talked about.
Mm-hmm.
I saw that, you know, there's different, could you just explain to me what that is a little bit?
Absolutely. So, in elementary schools, sometimes the practice is, when they have a situation, they put a green card in a window, or a red card, or a yellow card, or a purple card, and one means a sick child, one means a lockdown, one means an evacuation, one means a fire drill. What this Priority One does here is, it triggers a chain of events here that's going to do one of two things. Either we're staying or we're leaving. Teacher doesn't have to remember anything else. If we're staying, we're locking the door. If we're leaving, the door is open. That's the only two complications in this Priority One. So when we get on the PA system, and most of the students that have been here for three or four years are used to this, we're doing it more and more now with the freshmen, which haven't had these drills, when they hear my voice or another voice say we have a Priority One condition, we say it three times, it doesn't necessarily mean there's some guy in camouflage running down the hallway. It couldn't necessarily mean that in one minute, the bell rings, and I have EMS personnel here to remove a kid who's got a broken leg, and they can't possibly do that with the switch in the classes. So we lock everyone down. We had a sprinkler pipe go once, same thing, lockdown. The only time that this has been used in the seven, eight years that I've been here for a threat, was when we had the report of the camouflaged armed individual in the back, and that was even complicated more so because original intelligence was that that person was coming after a student that went here who was the son of a corporate executive where there were some labor issues in Berkeley Heights. So it was very complicated and very tenuous.
And you mentioned the students, are they, you said they're being drilled, so they understand, I mean, you guys, you know, would you know what to do if Priority One was called? Are you comfortable that, at this point, I mean, quickly, that you know where to go, what to do, what's happening?
Yeah, well, I didn't hear it in my classroom, actually, but like, if I heard Priority One, I know just go in my classroom, go in classroom, run in there.
Just run up in your classroom. Just fly.
We make it very simple even for the students, too, because we don't want them to remember a lot. If you give them a 14-page document, same thing with just teachers, they're not going to read it.
Kids walk back and forth.
Right. And it's very quick, hallways empty very quickly, and we make it very student-friendly without getting all cummers in the lunch. You're in the bathroom, finish up, get into a room. If you're in the nurse's office, stay there. If you're in the gym, stay there. It's very simple that way. There was not a lot to remember.
Can I have one more, though? You mentioned early on the attendance issue, and having to notify DIFIS, and I don't know if everybody caught that, but that's, we talked about that in Greenbrook, too. A very big change now, you know, tracking of attendance, and what unexcused absences are, and what has to be done if you accumulate so many absences, that they actually have to notify DIFIS now. So there's a big change. I don't know whether our policies need to reflect that, or don't need to reflect that, but, you know, if it's happening here yet, but.
It's happening here.
It's weird where, what exactly that is now, it's very different.
It is happening here, and what we also do, go one step further, is either myself and one of the nurses visits the home, because I'm suspicious by nature of certain things, and she would be suspicious of me by nature to the other. And then, even, you know, even situations where it's not five days, if we suspect something, we go out.
Steve, you mentioned before, sort of the new regulation, that if a student is not suspected in some criminality or otherwise, that you can speak to that student without notifying the parent?
The police can speak to that.
Police can notify them without speaking to the parent. I mean, is that a, is that, I don't know, is that a optional, or the police will speak without notifying?
Sometimes they can't make a notification, or don't want to make a notification, especially if the parent happens to be someone that might be suspect, as in the DIFIS case. DIFIS cases were already pretty much clean and cut, where you didn't have to notify the parent, especially if the parent was a suspect. But many times, it was very cumbersome to investigations, trying to find a parent, for them to just interview a witness, and the legislators, in their wisdom, have changed that law.
Let me just, as a matter of course, in a year, I mean, I mean, is this one or two?
This year?
How many instances would this have applied to?
This year, all grades, probably six or seven. Now, just so you know, myself or one of my other security people stays in the room.
What?
Myself or one of the other security people here, or administrator, stays in the room to act in local parenthesis. In other words, if we think something's going too far to the right, it's over.
If it, I guess my question, if this doesn't involve a parent, you know, involved something that happened on campus, or something off campus, I mean, I, you know, I mean.
I see your reservation.
I'm trying to think about, you know, a parent, you know, having a child, you know, spoken to by police, which is a, you know, it's an intimidating situation, that, you know, whether they should be notified or not, where the parent is not involved with what, the particular aspect of the investigation. Because, you know, I think there could be parents that would be troubled by that.
I imagine you could be right, but again, this was not by choice. This agreement was ironed out by the State Attorney General's Office, and is statewide.
I'm not sure we have that actually, and if some of these things are put in policy, in like the inappropriate conduct policy, the notification of DIFIS and things like that are pretty much triggered. Once it happens, then there's no recourse.
Well, I guess my question was.
I think to your point, too, maybe.
Did the police may, or do they have an absolute right to speak without talking to a parent? That's my question.
Chief Stahl, retired Chief Stahl, requested to address this, but from the county level, I mean, he may know some background of this, that, they gave us a, you know, a version like this.
Rob, what they're getting at is, let's say, for instance, that there was a report that a student brought a weapon to school. We want the ability to interview witnesses without, because time is of the essence, obviously, if someone has a weapon on school grounds. So without having to notify the parent in order to be able to talk to witnesses, that's what we want to be able to do. That way, we can talk to the witnesses, find out, yes, I did see a weapon, and now we can move quickly in that direction to, you know, to get our hands on it.
So that there's an emergent nature to this?
That's exactly what it's about.
This isn't the situation where, you know, the kid might know about someone who shoplifted some Nikes at Blue Star.
No, that's a different situation. Emergent is a perfect phrase, that's exactly what it's for, yes.
Steve, can I ask you a question? First of all, I appreciate your work on that grant, and I know the deadlines have been tight, and everybody's competing for the money, and you've received assistance from both of your colleagues, and I appreciate that. I thought there were some deadlines in that grant, where the Board of Ed must commit their support for the project because they must contribute money to the project.
That's correct.
And the deadline would be June 1st?
The document, including the, what do you call, the board approval, document resolution, has to be in their hands by June 13th.
June 13th, okay.
So we'll probably address it the next week.
If we needed a commitment from the board, I was going to say, let's.
It might get a little more complicated, because the next council meeting in Warren is the 29th, and what would normally happen, that Tim Cy was saying, is that we would work out an agreement, because Warren Township has to apply for the grant, we can't, because it's a law enforcement grant, and then we would be actually reimbursing them the money. So we may even have to have a meeting prior.
The earlier notification, the better we are, making sure our board, and I'll speak for them without knowing the details.
I was on the phone, I was on the phone with the vendor today, I was on the phone with the police officer who's going to write the grant for us today, and we should know whether we could have a shot at this in the next couple of days.
What's the scope of, you know, the totality of the grant, and how much would, you know, would we be paying 50% in the federal government?
Yes, it's a 50% match.
And what's the scope, the total dollars of the grant?
If I could get this PA system up to, which is, to me, very important.
Right.
Monumental. I think the cost is probably going to be around 50 grand.
So 25 for us?
Right.
Okay, so it's not a, you know, we're not committing to half a million dollars.
It's one hurdle over that, that's very important, because you've got to be able to communicate with these kids, no matter whether they're changing clothes or in the bathroom.
It's not a large amount of money that.
Correct.
Come up with, that's my question.
Correct.
Thanks. Steve, thank you. Chiefs, thank you very much for your continued support of being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Do you want to introduce the opt-out?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would like those, and just so you know, we don't like them sitting around anywhere, especially where there may be students or somebody else. If you have a chance, would you return? And that, we, I think we did put a tag on them, please return to my office, your agreement. And we sent those out, as you read, in response to Mr. Azarano's request for the information, and to see that we did indeed update it after the most recent incident. So it was important that you read the notes of the meeting that came along with that, if you didn't see. I'd like to move on to our opt-out program update, and I think Dr. DeGanci would like to introduce it, and introduce the presenters.
I'd like to introduce Mr. McConnell and Mr. Diaz, who will review where we've been with opt-out during the 2007, 2008, and where we'd like to go with 2008 and 2009. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. DeGanci. Okay, we'll be back.
You never go away with this, right? I mean, this is like.
Terry. We'll just go mike, so people. Okay. We're back, and what we're going to do today, we're just going to review our proposal for 2007, 2008. We will tell you where we were at. If you recall, we came to you back in August of 2007 to make a proposal to you at that time. At that time, we came up with a somewhat of a compromise. We wanted to tell you where we're at right now, and we wanted to set forth a proposal for the 2008, 2009 school year.
Mr. Diaz?
Thanks, Terry. We came in with a proposal last year to eliminate opt-out for ninth graders, but include opt-out for grades 10 through 12, as long as they didn't have a study hall. This is just a review. And we wanted to continue to review compliance of PE standards for grades 10 through 12. What, through discussion, what came about was ninth grade students were only able to opt-out for only one sport per year, and only if they had no study halls, and a belief in that the PE program could get most of the ninth graders who opt-out into all or part of the fitness and wellness program, which we were unable to do. This is for this year, Coach.
No, this is right here, okay? This is, this was, again, the reasons stay the same. This was the reason last year, we came to you with our proposal, so we just wanted to review the three major components. It hasn't changed, our beliefs haven't changed, so we just wanted to review those three.
I guess I'll read it to you. Strong belief that freshmen need the necessary foundation of the skills and strategies that would enable them to maximize their physical, social, personal, and psychological development. Freshmen are introduced into a fitness and wellness program during the first marking period. This begins the learning process of their lifelong health and wellness skills and behavior. And there's a strong need to address the national level concerns over the epidemic of adolescent obesity, diabetes, asthma, and other grave illnesses.
And I think, just, Mr. Diaz, we can, one of the things we talked about last year, and again, we had said to you, we would try, we had, with the compromise, we said we were going to try to get every freshman into that program, okay, the wellness and fitness program. But again, it didn't work out. We weren't able to get most of the students, we were able to get a number of students in there, but again, we didn't hit them all, and we really believe that it's important. Our PE teachers, I want to emphasize that, they are resident experts, and they believe it is that important, and again, we were unable, even though we tried to work some things out, we were unable to get them all into this program. And therefore, we want to propose, again, to go back to where we have our freshmen not able to opt-out, that our freshmen remain in gym because of the concerns that we just aired to you. One of the things also, I just wanted to point out, because one of the concerns, I know what people believe, that this is important, and that students need the time to do work, to study, et cetera. Interesting, though, I went back and I looked, remember, we have opt-out for freshmen first and second sports season only, meaning the fall and the winter. We cannot opt-out in spring because they have health. So what I did was, I went back and I got a majority of the report cards for this first semester, for the first sports season, and the cards for this first semester, for the first sports season and the second sports season. And again, what I found, 75%, no significant grade change between the season they opted out and the season they didn't. Again, that means I looked at all the grades. I compared, and I take the five major courses, the core curriculum, the history, English, science, math, world language, and I looked at all the grades. And again, 75% the grades, there was really no significant difference between the sport, the, the season that they opted out and the season they didn't opt out. 14% saw grades increase when they opted out. And again, I think most people would have imagined that would have been much higher. 11%, and I'm not sure why, actually saw their grades go down. Their grades actually went down somewhat the season they didn't opt out. So again, we, we, Mr. Diaz and I, on behalf of the P E department, again, would like to set forth this proposal to the Board of Education for 2008, 2009. Again, our belief that this wellness and fitness program is that important for our freshmen, that we, again, are asking for the elimination of opt-out for all ninth graders. We would continue the opt-out program for grades 10 and 12. If a student already has a study hall during the sports season, like we do today, this, this year, including senior early leave, they would not be able to opt out. And also, the elimination of opt-out for band. That is our proposals for the 2008, 2009 school year. Any questions?
Questions?
Terry, how many, how many people did you, couldn't get into the wellness program? Not this year, the year before?
What do you mean, the year before?
I, I want to get some metrics. I, we've got a lot of feelings.
I don't have the data for the year before, which is happening for this year.
Okay. I thought, though, this was going to be a program where we were going to look at this and then come back and evaluate what difference it had by doing it this way. So what can you tell me regarding that?
I would think that the statistic is pretty close to the same because the schedule hasn't changed. Now, the only thing that would change would be the number of participants that you had in sports.
Well, then, why do we think that we'd be able to get more kids into the wellness program by doing what we did?
Because what we said is, again, remember, two years ago, kid could opt out both seasons, okay? So again, there was an opportunity for kid, a child, to not get any of that at all. This time, we said one and one, and the hope was that we were able, we were going to be able to get a majority of the students into that. And I would say, what, what percentage would you say actually we're able to?
70% approximately.
So we're saying 30%, despite trying to do one and one, 30% were unable to get the fitness and wellness program.
Okay. What, what I'm missing here from, from your analysis is, okay, we couldn't get 30% in, but, but you're not telling us, those that we got into the wellness program, what difference it makes? And, and is it something that's valuable enough that you can produce a metric to show us so that we can judge that it's valuable enough to eliminate the opt-out?
Before you answer, having sat on your first presentation, and you're asking a question, part of your question was important to me. What was the importance of the wellness and fitness? Because I still don't know what Phys Ed is today. It's changed a lot from, from ancient history. But Mario, you did explain to me what we're doing with, with youngsters in today's Phys Ed, in today's wellness and fitness. I wasn't looking for the metrics because each child who loses it, what have they lost, I want to know? 30% of the kids lose it. What are those youngsters losing? What is this program that we feel is important? So perhaps that's part of.
I, I appreciate that, but when we were asked last August to approve going to this elimination of some of the opt-out, I expected that we were going to get a metric back telling us, okay, we've done this. What is the improvement in the education that we're giving the kids?
Won't we get 100% though? Pete, won't 100% of the freshmen then get it instead of 70%?
Well, I, I still have a question. If 100% of them get the, get that.
If we don't have that.
Other than the feeling that it's important that they have it, where's the measurement that we've improved the education?
But again, I think, I think we talked about this last time, Pete. There's no, there's, it's tough to measure, okay, what we're talking about. And again, I want to emphasize, our P E people are our experts, okay? They're the ones we depend on, and I can't tell you, I think I can't tell you, because I told you before, how strongly they feel about this. This is something, we're talking about lifelong skills. So it's hard to measure. We would have to look in the future to see when they're 20, when they're 30, when they're 40, and are these skills still being developed? Are they still doing the things that we hope freshman year, it starts the trend of a lifelong. So I think it's hard to measure something. It, it's hard to say because we're looking, we're looking in the future, and we believe this is important enough that when they don't get this, it kind of takes a step back.
Terry, I, I totally agree with you that it, that it's hard to measure, but, but what that brings us back to is, you're basically saying to us that we want to eliminate opt-out at this high school because the Phys Ed teachers think it's important to have this. And I'm sorry, but that's not enough for me to vote to say that that's what we should do. And, and.
Just let me, you're asking a very frustrating question, okay? And it's not a one-dimensional answer. The dynamic is, it's out there. My question to you, and to everybody on the Board of Education, to everybody sitting here, is that what did you know about diabetes? What did you know about health-related issues when you were in ninth grade, in eighth grade, in seventh grade? Would that had an effect on you in your later years in life? See, that's the question. We're able to, in depth, get into these issues that are, that are important on the national level, and they're important in our profession. That's about the only way I could answer that, to give you some type of quantitative answer that, is it valuable? Well, it's, it's not any, it's not, well, we don't, we don't do S A Ts for physical education. We can't tell you that our, our scores have risen. We can do that in math and in science and, and other subjects, but in physical education, there's no tool by the state majority to measure that. I can only, you know, say to you, where were we when we were 15? Would that have changed some of our lives? Would that have changed, you know, how we do things? You know, the effect of sugar on your body? I mean, we never knew those things, but.
And Mario, I'm not denigrating the importance of the information you're providing. I'm questioning your delivery model, okay? And, and what, what I haven't seen here is that, is that eliminating opt-out is the only way to deliver this information. It seems to me there are many other ways it could be looked at, including a readjustment of the time spent in, in physical activities versus discussion activities in Phys Ed throughout the year that would get you the hours that you need to impart, impart the knowledge that's so important.
That's, you know, that debate's been going on for the past 10 years, the physical activity versus the discussion, you know? And most districts, most physical educators have rested on that, you know, three quarters of activity versus one quarter of health instruction, so on and so forth. It's, it's hard to go both ways, you know? Some, they've, some, Ridgewood School District just went back to three marking periods of physical education, one marking period of health. They were, they experimented with two and two, and they felt that it was working against the, the movement concept of people staying healthy.
Listen.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah. I mean, listen, you talk about metrics. I don't, I don't think you, you need to do a, you know, exhaustive study because all the data is there that unfortunately, you know, with kids today, from early on through grade school, middle school, high school, the obesity, you know, is, is tremendous. I, I, I mean, it's, it's whatever factor, you know, it is, it's a heck of a lot more, you know, I, you've seen studies, you know, 25, 30% of kids are obese. And, and anything that we can do in this school for a takeaway, for kids to lead a, a healthy life, I mean, if anything, the tendency with children now is to be more sedentary between, you know, their computers, between the internet, cell phones. There's less activity, sitting home, you know, with their fingers on, on some type of keyboard. And I, I think, you know, this is a good effort, and part of the dilemma is, you know, Peter asked, well, are there other ways to do it? Well, you know, the other problem is, we're, we're trying to come up with a, a longer instructional period. So I mean, the, the day's very tight, you know? I mean, even to, you know, add another 10 minutes, I, I, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a good idea. It's a great idea. I mean, you know, I, I would even think that you'd want to go one step further, you know, to talk about grants before, with the, the chiefs were here before talking about it. I mean, you know, I'd love to see this school get a grant to, to put in a, an after-school, you know, weight reduction program for kids in our school who, you know, who for some reason just can't lose the weight, that, you know, they could come after school. We could have a, you know, if we got a grant, you have a nurse, people from your department, they could be here two, three times a day, you know, get weighed privately, beginning of the year, end of the year, learn nutrition. I mean, you know, you know, if a healthy lifestyle, you know, you know, sound mind, sound body. I mean, if we can do those things for a child when they leave, I, I think it's, it's an admirable, commendable effort. And I, I think, you know, you know, I'm very supportive of what you're doing. I think, you know, we've reached a point where, you know, I, I think we should, you know, take a vote and, you know, and see where we want to do in this.
Yeah, we're not taking a vote tonight.
Well, I mean, sooner than later.
This was information, this, tonight, I just want to remind you, this is a purpose, is an update, to give everybody a chance to hear the proposal, have a chance to ask questions.
I just mean, Paul, sooner than later. I mean, it's been talked out. I mean, you know.
Well, this is like, this is what we asked them to do, which was to, to come back sometime this spring to give us an update and see where they might want to go the next time around. Bernie, just, Bernie started raising his hand.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I want to follow on Peter's comment a bit, that all the topics you mentioned, I think, are of interest to us. I would just ask, aren't some of those already covered in the health curriculum? And if not, couldn't we do some kind of a web training that would, could bring it to everybody, not just 70%, and make it mandatory to spend so many hours doing a tutorial on the internet that we provide to make sure that they get it? I'd like to also sort of question for the next time you come here, why does it have to be in ninth grade? I mean, if somebody could get it in 10th grade, are we going to ruin their lives by giving it to them in 10th grade or 11th? I don't think so. And I would say, in addition to the grades, we really ought to look at the stress levels for the students who do come back, you know, nine or 10 o'clock from a game or a track meet. Stress is just as important to me as the grades, and I think that, you know, whatever you study it did, I think it was like, it kind of was left like in the middle, that it's not conclusive one way or the other. But I do think we need some input from parents and students about what the impact of this is going to be. And I, I think there, there probably would be a way, next time you come to us, to tell us for those 30% who did not take the course as freshmen, you know, were they all in one or two sports? What, what difference could it really make to those kids? And, you know, my, you know, thinking back to some, some of my own kids and others, that if they're in one or two sports, I do believe that they get a pretty good, a pretty good rounded, you know, training in both physical and mental kind of things that will stay with them a long time in their life. So I don't believe that just having this one course is going to change that, especially for kids who are in one or two sports.
Well, if we believe that someone's life can be changed because they played one sport, then we should believe that someone's life could be changed because they had one course. My first time here, second time here, I, I, we talked about the difference between an athletic coach training a team for competition versus a physical education teacher training a class in physical education. They're two different, two different entities. That's the only way I could answer that question. You know, if we feel that one sport can change a life or be significant in some way, then we should be able to recognize that there are courses. There is a course. And teaching a course is a certain dynamic that you need. Instructors make those courses dynamic. They're role models for kids. You know, we, we, I'm not beating the drum, but we have a pretty good Phys Ed department. We have some pretty good role models, okay, that the kids really like. You know, they identify with them. I think that's important.
Was that, Jerry, your question?
Yeah, I, I had a, and we, we talked about this in the co-curriculum committee too. I mean, this is kind of the conversation here that very much followed the conversation we had in that, in that group. I think one of the things that concerned me last time was brought forward was the timing of it. It came very quickly before the beginning of the school year, in which case many kids had enrolled or taken courses and done things based with that expectation. So again, I think as a board, we need to make a decision before a lot of the kids register, before choosing their courses, so they know going into next year what it is that we've allowed them or not allowed them to do. It's not appropriate for us, again, in August, to be wrestling with this. So at some point, we need a, we need an early decision. They, they've told us in the committee that, you know, there's enough time so that students can still register and take the courses, and with the understanding, they haven't got to that point yet, but there will come a point where the students should know what it is that we're allowing them to do or not do. So that, that is a big concern that I've got over the decision that we're making.
Let me, just so you're aware of it, and some of you are probably aware of this already, this topic has been deferred twice before coming to this board at my request because we were in the middle of budget discussions, which I felt had to take priority at that point in time. And so given that, as you know, my belief is that we don't make good decisions after 10:30 at night, I felt we probably would make a good decision on any of the topics I presented there. So I kind of, I said, let's hold off on that, let's then focus on budget, make sure those things are done. So that's why it's here tonight, because it was the first chance that we could bring it back to this board.
But we do need a decision.
We do need to make a decision.
And the other, the other comment, I'm not sure whether it was mixed in with the other things, was, in the co-curriculum, it talked about the programs not meeting the core curriculum standards for Phys Ed right now. I'm not sure how much of that you want to share or not share, but the way the programs are being structured now, or being delivered now, we're not compliant, I think, with what we're supposed to be delivering.
Yeah, it goes back to what we talked about, geez, I forget when we were here.
Back in August.
Back in August. The core content standards address areas that you need to accomplish, I'm running out of words, or go through, have in your program, where none of those things are defined in, in an athletic team, okay? What I did is that I, I analyzed all the athletic teams to the core content standards and checked off the ones that were covered, each sport covered the core content standards. Some of them were close, some of them were far away. I, I gave, I did distribute that report, okay? The compliance thing is something that, you know, is there. It's black and white. It says that, you know? It's probably a lot easier to, to formulate if it was a math class, or a science class, or an English class. But because of physical education being the nature that it is, it's a lot more difficult, and I know, and I know it is, okay? And, and I lived that world too, you know, athletics and P E, okay? It's, there, there are some differences as the state defined, not, not watch on hills.
Very important to the district this year because in November, we're going through our monitoring. Tom, were you going to address that?
Yes, I would, if possible. I just want to thank the board because, Pete?
One more question. Somebody address for me the parameters with regard to the band?
Do you want to do the band? Listen, Tom, why don't you answer the question about the.
And then I'll switch right into the.
You can answer the band question also.
Sure. This board has been one of the most progressive boards in terms of providing us the opportunity to give opt-outs. If you go throughout the state, rarely do you see schools proposing opt-outs for their kids. When we did this three, four years ago, we looked at it as a pilot, and we continued it because we thought it was something that was positive for our students. Now, with the core content curriculum standards that Mario was referring to, Dr. Ada was referring to now, we feel confident that with the ninth graders, that if they take a full year, as they transition from eighth to ninth into our fitness and wellness program, they will have fulfilled at least many of those core content curriculum standards. We will catch the rest in 10th, 11th, and 12th because we have kids who will be taking health. They have to take health by standards, and perhaps one physical education class through that year, if they have a study hall or something of that nature. So as Dr. Ada said, with our undergoing monitoring in the next year in terms of the, the studies we're now going through, I think, unless I feel confident that having a ninth grade program will help us fulfill the requirements of the state in New Jersey. Now, with band, there's not another school in the state that has this that sees band as a physical activity in terms of the core contact curriculum standards. Time, perhaps, in terms of the activities that are involved, when you reference them or course reference them at the standards, they just don't match. So at that point, we probably would not be in compliance, hence the request to eliminate band as a. band as a, as a part of the opt-out program.
I'll, I'll betray my prejudice, but, but compare band for me to, to bowling and tennis in terms of how the core curriculum, marching band to bowling and tennis is to what core curriculum standards bowling and, not tennis, bowling and golf meet, that the band doesn't.
Maybe Mario would like from an athletic point of view? I can go from a educational point of view, but I'd like Mario from an athletic.
I don't have the report on me, but, um...
If it's in there, I'll just go back and read it, Mario, that's fine.
Or maybe we could circulate it again to us or email it to us? Yeah, I started to look for it when I, before I got up here tonight, if I ran out of time, I may have a copy of it.
You sure I do have a copy? Don't worry, we'll, we'll look at the report. If there's still a question, we'll ask, thank you.
Okay, can we get, I want to, so, go ahead.
There are two distinct parts to this that I see. One is opting out to give our students more time for their other academic studies. The other part of it is opting out because it's replacement of a physical activity. Two completely different reasons for opting out in my book. And if we're talking about time management, and there's no question, our, our devoted students are working terribly, terribly long, probably longer hours than they will in college or in their jobs, unless you happen to work for Watch on Hills, right, Tom? But we have so many youngsters who do after-school activities that are not, activities, robotics, very time-consuming, theater, very time-consuming, and I'm sure there are youngsters who work after school, very time-consuming. So if we're talking on this half that I see as, well, we want to give our students an extra 40 minutes to get their schoolwork done because they're going to be physically active out of school, I think we have to put these two completely opposite reasons for opting out. Mario threw in that academically, he wants to see these youngsters transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade, and there's a special program, which he convinced me was most important, that these youngsters be exposed to at this point. Phys ed, I was shocked to find out 4% of the students continue in their sport once they graduate from high school. College level, only 4% of them are continuing. So it's wonderful that they have this from age 14 to 18, but it's also wonderful that our youngsters have robotics and the other things that are very meaningful to them. But how much do you want to give for this 40 minutes, we think it'll be a 40-minute period next year? How much do you want to give for this opting out? It, it's just putting the youngsters, well, you are a, a different activity after school. But if this is the way we have directed our youngsters, it's very easy to give, it's very hard to take away. And to start taking away, I think the best reason I've heard to take away is because you want to get them in another, even more important educational program, which is that wellness and fitness program. Time-wise, I'm sorry to see our kids working so doggone hard after school and so stressed. You know, that's, that's just, nothing I'm going to change, nor is, is this board going to change. Parents seem to want homework, if I ever speak to them, they say, "We're not getting enough for the globalization of education, our kids are going to be caught behind unless they work hard after school." That's completely different. But I think we have a very little chink of, of decision to make, and all we're asking for is, should we take the ninth graders and have them not opt-out during their ninth grade season of a sport in order to give them a study hall? It, it, it doesn't seem to me like it's a very deep problem that has to go through a lot of metric study.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any other comments, Lou, or questions? This is the information gathered, and then we're going to move on.
This is a little bit of both. The, my older son just finished the wellness and fitness course in college. He would come home and we'd have discussions over information that he's learned in this course. And my younger son, who's a junior, has sat there and listened also. And he has gotten so much information about health and fitness and how to exercise, how to stretch, how to deal with stress. I think the best opportunity to get this in is in the ninth grade, when these students are coming in, they're going to be bombarded with all this information, and how do I deal with it? How's my body going to react? My stress levels, what causes stress? How do I deal with it? How do I exercise? What exercises to do? What, what sport? These are all things that they'll be able to cope with in their 10th, 11th, and 12th grades. It's, I think it's an awesome course. Now whether we drop opt-out, I don't care how we do it, but this is a course that I feel, I've learned a ton of information just from this one, two-credit college course that he came home with and we would just start talking about things. So it's an awesome class and the best time is to get these kids when they're just starting in ninth grade so that the next three years after that, they can take care of it, they can deal with it in, in a logical way and understand why things are happening, why they're, they're stressed, why they're tired in class and things like that. So I, I don't know if opt-out is the way to go, but this course is, definitely has to be interjected somehow.
I had two, two questions, I get the right of having the last question, so, otherwise we'll be here till midnight on the same topic and we won't have made any progress. You had pointed out that 70, only something like 70% of the freshmen where you were able to get in. What was it, why, why did we not, were we not able to get the freshmen in? What caused that failure?
Yeah, one variable was the kids', their sports season, when they elected to opt-out. The other variable is when we scheduled, scheduling in the sense of when you schedule the fitness room, because you can't have, you know, you can't have 50, 60 kids in a fitness room as you're doing this. I think those are the two big factors that were, it created a, you know, the misstep on that. Well, it's not a misstep, but we tried to, to get them in there, but...
And you thought that modifications of those things might get that from 70% up to 95%?
Oh, Dr. Sealy, I'll be honest with you, you know, talking about schedules again. It was tough this year, it was tough this year. The schedule, it drives phys ed people nuts. It was difficult because we have to combine sections. We have, we have periods where kids meet in different days. It's rather somewhat of a complex thing if you're not involved with it, but if you are involved with it, I'm sure we, we all figure it out, which we do, that part. So if I'm teaching a physical education class, that's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and you're teaching one that's a block, which is Tuesday, Thursday, double period, it's, those are the problems that we ran into in, in scheduling. So I know that's...
It's mostly the scheduling.
Absolutely.
Scheduling, okay. I have one last question, and I don't know if Tom may be doing, if, I know you said that some of the content that we are, we're including in here addresses the CUSAC, or addresses core curriculum content standard. If we don't include that, what impact is that going to have on us with regard to our CUSAC monitoring for next year?
We may not be in compliance regarding that.
Well, give me, I want to get down to the, what is that, I know compliance, but does that mean that we, did we fail a category?
I'm, I'm not going to say that because I don't know the numbering issue, maybe Mrs. DeGronimo might be able to respond.
Okay, I just want to get down to the nails of what, what impact would actually have on us?
Clearly there, there's a section for curriculum and instruction, or rather, program and instruction, and each one of those sections, thanks, Tom, has a value, a numeric value. I would really have to go back to the office and, to my booklet, to figure out exactly the number of points that would, we would be subtracting from that entire packet on curriculum and instruction. But curriculum and, excuse me, program and instruction is a large component. We do have to indicate that in each of the content areas, that we do have curriculum, that we do have the appropriate activities aligned with it, and that they are addressed across the board, grades nine through 12. I, I can find a number for you if you would like.
If you could do that, I would personally appreciate. I would like to know what the monitoring impact would be on this school district when we, because I, we're going to have to file that report sometime in the October, November timeframe, I think it's due November the, November the 15th or something like that.
Yeah, it's November the 15th, yeah, but we would have...
I remember the date.
Yeah.
Blazing is in my important memory.
Yeah.
We have a lot of work to do between now and then, but I would like to know, is, is understanding the con, the impact on this district if we don't make this change.
Absolutely, I can find that out for you.
I'm going to go back to the question I asked first.
I got the last question.
No, you didn't, because it was unanswered. The registration for freshmen and course selection occurs when?
The registration is going on right now.
The actual choosing the courses.
And choosing the courses. But please understand, all kids choose physical education, it's required.
Just to add, but I know last year, the comment was, they took courses based upon the fact that they plan to have opt-out as part of their routine, if you will, for freshmen. I'd just like to know that the process that we can get the conclusions of, of this, this decision, so one way or the other, we know what the decision's going to be.
I think that decision's going to have to come forth on the June 4th, the next meeting.
Well, and that would be okay if we could do that.
I think that's what we're going to do.
So I'd like to have...
We're getting all the input now?
We'll distribute the report.
We'll come back and make a decision.
Why don't we distribute the CUSAC document in this area with the report?
So we could say on June 4th, we'll have one way or the other.
I think that's the next meeting, if I'm not, wherever the next meeting is, I think it's the 4th. So we'll come back and make a decision on that.
Maybe the 2nd.
The 2nd.
The 2nd, June 2nd, I apologize. So it's two days soon. Any other questions? That, we're done with that? Okay.
See, gentlemen, I assure you, it wouldn't be more than 10 minutes.
It's now, if we can move on to, first of all, thank you very much for your discussion presentation. Tom, Jerry, and Mario, and Deb.
Paul. If there's public comment, do you want?
We're going to that next. This is the first opportunity for the public to comment. Let me just, before I go ahead, be aware that the science exploration is in, there was a written material which is in your packet that describes that, and there's also a, we'll have the robotics at the next meeting, I believe, if all goes well. Yeah, I'm going to have to get all my, rest of my board members back here so we can hear the public comments.
Are there any?
Yes, there will be. Can I get you guys back here so we can continue with the 4th discussion on that? All right, gather around here, Jerry. I hate to be rude about this, but we want to move on, and I want the public talking to people that aren't...
You might want Mario and...
No, Mario, if you and Tom and Terry could, Mario, if you and Terry and Tom could stay here, because there may be things that come up in the public discussion, yeah?
Just for a few...
Maybe just for a few minutes. I'm going to open it up for public comment. This is on any topic related to the agenda, that, that is, that's on the agenda since the opt-out was on there. I think there's some parents here that wish to talk to us about this topic, maybe not. There will be a second time for a public comment where any topic will be open for comment at that time. Your comments are limited to five minutes, and if you do so, please, choose to address us, I need to know your name and address, okay? So whoever wants to come forward, please come forward. Yeah, I, I'm going to ask you to come up to the microphone because these meetings are all videotaped and that's the way we're going to get your, all your thoughts accurately recorded.
Marie Malouzan, 16 Quill Penn Way and Warren. I do have something to say about opt-out, but I, I heard the little conversation about the cafeteria plan. I did want to say that I have three boys here, and the reason why I'm not choosing to do the cafeteria plan for them is because the fear of them racking up huge lunch bills. I have no control over how much they spend in a given day, yes?
I was just going to say, I mean, that's, listen, I have parented kids who've been here too, and, you know, give them a carload of money, the, there are ways, and we have that, that if you wanted, you know, limit it per day at $4 or per month, whatever, there are those parameters, and you'd also be able to check to see daily, weekly, monthly, how much is being spent, so.
Okay.
If, if those were your fears, I'm just...
It was, it was, actually.
Rob, just let her make all her comments, we, this is their, their chance to talk, not ours, okay?
But that's good to know. I didn't know that in the form, because I did read through. I wanted to put a limit on it per day so that they're not spending more than I would give them in cash every day. About the opt-out, I, I truly appreciate all the comments and information that was given, and it's hard to say as a parent that I would want that taken away from my children, the ninth grade program about the wellness and, and health. But as a parent of three boys at this school who have all participated in athletics since the time they were in ninth grade, I have to say that opt-out is a gift. And I tell my children every day that opt-out is a gift, that they should utilize the time, you know, to, to get homework done, to meet with teachers, to come to the library, things like that. However, I have to be honest, I don't think my children actually take 100% advantage of that. But the one thing I can say is that after having children who have played three sports in this school in ninth grade, because they went from soccer to basketball to baseball, there are sports, specifically baseball, and I can only talk about the sport that my children have played, that when these kids are waking up at, you know, 6 o'clock in the morning and getting on a 7 o'clock bus and coming here all day, if you're on the freshman basketball team and you are asked to then play up, you're actually here for the JV game, which doesn't start until 5:15, gets over approximately quarter to 7, you're coming home on the bus, and if you're a, a sophomore doing it at the JV varsity level, as you know, these kids are here then for 14-hour days because varsity games don't start until 7:00 PM. Over at 8:30, the bus comes back at 9, they're home at 9:30. That's from waking up at 6:30 in the morning. So even if my children and other children didn't 100% take advantage of the fact that they had this wonderful time of 45 minutes to do homework and study, but they just used it as a mental health break, I think it helps to reduce stress and I think it helps them refresh for the rest of what they have ahead of them. You know, I had sent out this email to probably 75 to 100 people yesterday telling them that the opt-out might be eliminated, and then I, I got an email from Mario saying that some of the information I had was incorrect, and I, instead of just letting people come, I did send his information out to all the people that I had sent it to. However, and that's why I think that so few people came, because they were like, phew, it doesn't affect us because everybody here has a child going to 10th, 11th, or 12th grade next year. The target group that it doesn't affect are all the people currently now who have eighth graders. And so I think that there should be an opportunity for those people. And, you know, maybe we can say, well, what they don't know doesn't hurt them, because maybe they can just acclimate to a program of not having opt-out. But like I said, I had two of my three boys who played three sports as freshmen, which they tend to do. They tend to kind of eliminate one as they get to be sophomores, juniors, and seniors, but it seems that every freshman has these, the vision of playing three sports, and they do, and I think that, that opt-out, like I said, was a gift. I'm hoping that there's some way that, for example, I know that health has given fourth marking period to freshmen, and I know that this would be crazy and, but I'm just thinking, like, outside the box, okay, so if, if health were offered first, second, or third marking period, and a student was going into and made his third sport, they would at least have the opt-out for fourth marking period. But they couldn't if health were offered only fourth marking period. So I think that it takes a little bit of rescheduling and, and thinking about, in, in terms of the children and what's best for them. And like I said, if there was another meeting that this was going to be discussed, you know, I would be inclined to invite some eighth grade parents for them to come and speak on their own children's behalf. I do have another one coming up, but I don't know what his future holds in terms of sports at this high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I do have an eighth grader. Mildred Spiller, 12, Quill Penn Way and Warren. Most of the things that I jotted down before I came here and, and listening to you guys, you, you have basically covered most of the issues. What I just want to reemphasize is, while I certainly recognize, definitely recognize the value of the wellness and fitness program, I'm just wondering, can't we do it and implement it another way? Can it become part of the health curriculum? Are there just other ways, things that you guys discussed? Are there other ways to accomplish this so that the kids do get this education, but without having to compromise the opt-out program? You should know that in biology and in many other classes, these kids get a wealth of information regarding their own health, just to, you know, and I just wonder if in some of the other courses, there are ways that you can implement what you want, what you want them to learn by just having this wellness and fitness, are there other places where we could do it? Not only phys ed or health, but, you know, just things to look at, that maybe there's another way. In hearing, again, about the value of the program for freshmen, particularly, one issue that was not, what was addressed here by the board, but wasn't addressed by Mr. Conlon and Ms. Diaz, is the stress levels that these kids have, especially the freshmen. I spoke to, I have a, a child who graduated, I have a sophomore, they both took advantage of opt-out, and I have an eighth grader who is coming in next year, and I asked my older kids about the opt-out and whether they thought, you know, how valuable was it? And they, absolutely was, was valuable. And my son, who did not, was not able to take advantage of it this year because he had health during the time that he was playing a sport, you know, it did, it, his stress levels were quite high during that, but he managed. But I said to him... But I said to him, "Well, what do you think, um, about the freshmen?" And he said that he thinks it's even more valuable for freshmen, because they're coming in here, and while we want them to learn the tools and, and the skills and the things that you're suggesting with the wellness and fitness, what they're not prepared for when they come here is the overwhelming nature of the homework assignments, the rigorous schedule, especially the kids that are in higher-level courses. They do not, they, while we'd like to think that they would be more prepared, it's just that the, what they're doing in middle school is nothing compared to what happens to them in their freshman year. And I think that that, um, that study hall, the opt-out, gives them a lot in terms of alleviating their stress and learning, and, and gives them a lot more in learning how to manage their time. Um, I do wanna remind you, I was here at one of the prior meetings, and you had a lot of kids here telling you how they felt about how valuable the opt-out was for them, so just like, don't forget that when you're revisiting this issue as a board. Uh, remember what they said. Um, and, uh, another thing I was thinking of when I was here was the scholar athletes, how we honor scholar athletes, the school does, the county does, the state does, and, you know, one of the ways we can continue to honor the scholar athletes, I think, is to keep the opt-out program in place. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time?
Linda Bosco, 30 Blasier Road in Warren. Um, I prepared a written statement, just to make sure I stayed within my five-minute time, so, um, my concern, you know, I don't have a ninth grader anymore, but my concern is, if you remove it from the ninth grade, are they going to wanna remove it from 10th, 11th, and 12th grade next? So, that's why I'm here. And my take is a little bit different, because my, well, I have two kids. One never used the opt-out program, my senior, but my sophomore has used it as much as he could use it. Um, the youngest, uh, needs it to the point that I requested that he have a study hall if he doesn't have an opportunity to opt-out for a sport. Um, so he really needs that break during a sports season. Um, the problem is, when he has a study hall, he can't have an elective. So now, he's skipping electives, so he can have a study hall, uh, which I'm not really happy about. I'd rather see, frankly, I'd rather see him have two opt-outs, so he can have an elective instead of having gym class, but I know that's not going to work. Um, some kids are great at coming home, working on their homework late at night. My son is not one of them. He's tired, sometimes going to bed at 9 o'clock. Even if he starts something at 8 to 9 o'clock, he has the opportunity to finish it the next day at school. Um, secondly, um, my second son does have an IEP, and he does get extra time for tests, um, if he doesn't finish during classroom time. Now, I know he could go to the gym teacher, and he can say, "Can I have a little bit extra time? Could I not come to gym today, so I can make up time for my test?" That doesn't happen. A ninth grader does not ask the gym teacher to leave gym, so he can make extra time for tests. Um, you may say, you know, he can do it, but it just doesn't happen, and he doesn't get excused from gym for that situation. Um, uh, the last thing, um, I agree with Marie, sometimes he doesn't use the whole time to do homework. Sometimes he just sits there and just looks up at the ceiling. That's the nature sometimes of a kid who, um, has some special needs, let's say, okay? Um, I'd love for him to do his homework the whole time, um, one during study hall or two during opt-out. I know sometimes he sits at study hall and just looks at the ceiling. So, um, that's really all I have to say, is, uh, I just hope you don't, um, you hope you don't give it up for any of the kids at all, and, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public at this time? With that, we'll close the, uh, public session. Appreciate you taking the time and energy to come out here and wade through committee reports and things like that. Of course, again, given the other presentation, I hope you found those, uh, useful also. The, uh, and I, and I will thank, my counsel, my left is invited. Thank Mario and Tom, you're here anyway, and Terry for being here tonight. Uh, appreciate you taking the time and effort. You've been here many times on this topic, I suspect that you'll be here more on the same topic. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to, uh, board discussion. Uh, I just had one item, and that's I passed out, I handed out to each of you, the committee assignments for this year. I've tried my best to honor those requests that were made, uh, there are three columns on this report. There's a committee name and representation assignments down the left side. The center is the assignments as best I knew it in 2007, 2008, and the membership then is, uh, for 2008, 2009 is on the, uh, right column. Okay? Does everybody have a copy?
They bring the folder.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's got that copy. If you have any real concerns on this, please just give me a call or send me an email. Uh, I've tried to, I've tried my best to be, what, kind of what everybody is looking for here.
The only question I have is the CUSAC. People, if you could address that at some point, or I think we need to have one or two, or if you want, or if you want a subcommittee of the board, that's also allowed.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to have a, we're gonna, that's gotta get organized real quick here, and we're gonna have to have a committee, subcommittee get involved in that from the board, I think.
Yeah, you're gonna have a report at the June meeting-
Okay.
-of where we are, and indeed, we're gonna request the board representation.
Okay. And when there's not a committee, there's two- You could, you need a representative, but you can also have the option of a subcommittee as well.
Which seems, a lot of districts are opting for that, just so you know.
Yeah, okay. It's a subcommittee.
Yeah. So think about scheduling, when it would meet, whether it's gotta be during the day, you know, to meet with, because if a two-
There's a lot of people.
There's a lot of logistics there. All right, I don't have any other items on board discussion, but we move into the action items.
One more call for the retreat, if you want, at some point.
Yeah, would you, are you, I didn't want, are you prepared to talk about that tonight?
I just, uh, only thing is that we need to schedule one, and we could try to do it with the summer, so-
I was hoping we could do that, and it was last, I wanted to make sure Dr. Stromsland was here, so we could do the scheduling, but she got back.
Okay.
I just had, she's gonna be back, if, oh, proceeds well through the first week of June.
I'd just like to probably find some dates then, if we can start to search calendars, maybe to, if we want-
We can handle that.
School Board Association representative, or who you wanna do it and all those things to get organized, so we can get the logistics.
We could probably handle that administratively.
Yeah, do you want, see if you can get, get out some dates, people, towards the end of June, and see what we can do.
Do you wanna be off-campus, on-campus?
No, that thing that we do-
Wow, okay.
What we're doing in Greenbrook, you know, we decided we wanna sit in the library and do it, or we would pay our own fare and go somewhere, or the words, you know, hotel like we go to every year, and just be able to have a reasonable dinner and have a retreat there, so. There's rules now that say you can't really go off-site, 'cause of the money.
Right.
But, so, you know, how the board feels here, it's, we may want to talk about it.
Can we look for another free off, freebie off-site, or is that-
Yeah, if somebody wants to donate their facility, let's, we might do that.
Didn't Chub donate it?
Chub donated it last year, yeah.
So.
We could, yeah, Chub donated the facility last year, and, uh-
Well, you know what, who might, you know, who might also do something is, um, that stone-
Stone hatch.
Stonehenge.
Stone hatch, right. The former, uh, whatever.
Stonehouse. Stonehenge, that's, every time I drive by, I start thinking that. I think, so you'll send out some notices, and we'll get some, uh-
Yes.
Try to get some, work out some dates, early, end of June, early July, tie for me. If we go too late, we end up in vacation special, that's gonna be a problem. Thank you. Um, with that, we'll move on to the action items. Um, I don't think there are any changes. Do I, do any of the As, do any of the As, does anybody wanna pull any of the As for separate voting? A1 through A8.
Tim, you were gonna let us know on A1 and A2 who wasn't at these sessions?
I have the unit from these-
Go ahead.
Uh, Rob was not at the April 7th meeting.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
How about, okay, so that's only-
A couple people came late, because we got to 6:30 and the 7th clock.
That's okay, that's okay. We're only voting on the April the 7th, so Rob, you're gonna, you'll have to stand.
No problem.
Anything, anybody else wanna pull any of the As? All right, can we get-
I will then move A1 through A8.
Second.
All right, so we moved to second, any discussion? Hang in, roll call vote.
Mr. Binder?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Falzerano?
Yep.
Speckner?
Yes.
Harwitz?
Yes.
Smindal?
Yes.
Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Sun?
Yes.
Dr. Yagid?
Yes.
Dr. Seeler?
Yes.
Okay, we have, um, no, nothing in the curriculum instruction, we have personnel, we have the C1 through C14 that were on the agenda, and we have a walk-on, which is in your packet there, which is C15. Does anybody have any of the Cs that they wanna pull for voting separately on?
Substitutes, does anybody have to pull substitutes separately?
Yeah, make sure there's nobody here, uh, in any of these items that might some way be related to you, in any way. Okay, hearing none, uh, can I get a motion on C1 through C15?
I'll move C1 through C15.
It's been moved to second, any discussion on C1 through C15?
There's a couple of things. One is, um, you got a revised resume on one of the items, so there's that. But I also, I had asked the Personnel Committee to include the list of dates for bus drivers for data hire, and that's where you've gotten a revised schedule, um, included in your packet tonight. However, there's some differences between some of the dates on the two sheets, and I pointed that out a little earlier.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, it doesn't affect the appointment, but we will resubmit a sheet to you tomorrow.
And the only reason I, I had asked this in the Personnel Committee meeting was because at one point, we had some, um, we had done some wrong rates for some of the bus drivers.
Yes.
So I, I know they're not on staff, and I know they're not on a guide, so I thought it went by hire date, you know, as far as which salary they're on. And I still have a question, because some of the hiring dates, you know, if you look at the dates, it looks like they should be reversed in terms of salary. I'm not, not sure why. Like Patricia England and James Corin. And, and why would one be 2789 and one would be 2197?
I'll have to take a look at that, Jerry. I'll take a look at the dates.
I think Patricia had been here in another capacity.
She was here prior, I think.
I think we gotta look at the dates.
Cafeteria issue.
I think the, the, I know, the important thing is, you're comfortable the rates are correct, right?
Yes, the rates are absolutely correct.
And I know we put this off from our last meeting.
Yes, we did.
And I'm sure they want to have this approved at this meeting, but I will ask that we go and fix something, and, and just so we know in the future, what, you know, why they're on a certain pay structure. That was my point here, why, you know, one's being paid a certain rate, so that there's some check, you can check and see.
Yeah.
You know, if Patricia England is, you know, a special circumstance, it may be put a note or something saying, you know, effective because of-
Start with this record going forward.
Yeah, just so that we have a consistent way in the future of look, you know, monitoring what we're paying them, so we know that-
I think your request is very appropriate.
I think it's a really good request, and let's just see if we can follow up on that. Okay. Are there, is there any other, I, any other discussion on C1 through C15? Can I get a roll call vote?
Mr. Binder?
Yes.
Fallon?
Yes.
Falzerano?
Yep.
Mr. Speckner?
Yes.
Mr. Harwitz?
Yes.
Mr. Smindal?
Yes.
Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Sun?
Yes.
Dr. Yagid?
Yes.
Dr. Seeler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, on the Ds, we have, let me just take you through this. We have D1 through D5 on the original agenda. The D6 is the revised walk-in. D7 is no longer on the agenda.
Right, yeah.
And D8 is then on the walk-in.
That's correct.
I got it right. Okay. Does everybody understand that? Does anybody have any of the Ds, the D1 through D6 and D8, that they would like to pull for separate voting?
Six and seven.
D7 is, yeah, D6 and D7 are pulled, the D6 is on.
I, I would say, recommend that you-
I'm gonna pull D6.
Yeah, I would recommend you defer both D6 and D7.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
We have to go to executive session to discuss D6 and D7. We have the board-
Did you, even with the, even with the new D6?
With the revision, you should do that.
Okay, then with that, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I apologize. We're gonna pull D6 and D7, so that we can have a discussion in executive session. After that, we'll come out of executive session and vote on it, okay?
Right.
So then, given that, can I get a motion, unless you have something you wanna pull separately, for D1 through D5 and D15?
I'll move D1 through D5 and D8. Second that.
Is there any discussion on this?
The only question I have, Tim, on D2, you were asking for a waiver for 10%.
Yes.
The entire line item, that was 10%, because, not an individual, but the entire roll-up number.
It's the school administration, which encompasses the principal's office and the central office grouping. Uh, you can't have a transfer over 10%. We hit it earlier this year due to a, uh, just a, a budgeting change of the athletic director from where it was accounted for into the administrative. Now, every expense you put into that, any budget change-
So that's why we got over the 10%.
Right, we already were over there, so we, we added 19,000 for that. So we had to get that request.
And once you hit that, every time you add anything to it after that, you then have to report it.
Yes.
Okay.
Could we give an explanation on D8?
Yes, uh, D8, what it is, is we have a lease purchase in our budget in '08, '09. We went out to bid for the financing of the lease purchase, which is an $800,000 lease purchase.
For, for what was that?
Equipment, uh, technology equipment, buses-
Sound system?
Sound system for the auditorium, uh, studio, TV studio equipment, and those, all those things together combined to 800,000, which we're leasing over five years, just We went out to bid for the financing of the lease purchase, which is an $800,000 lease purchase.
For, for what was that?
Equipment, technology equipment, buses...
Sound system.
Sound system for the auditorium, studio, TV studio equipment, and those, all those things together combined to $800,000, which we're leasing over five years, just for informational purposes. We budgeted a rate of 4.5%. The rate came back at 3.22, which is terrific.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I get a roll call vote on D1 through D5 and D8?
Yeah, we do.
It was over there somewhere.
It was Peter and Jerry.
Peter and Jerry.
Mr. Binder?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Falzerano?
Yep.
Mr. Speckner?
Yes.
Mr. Harwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Mandell?
Yes.
Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Sun?
Yes.
Dr. Yagud?
Yes.
Dr. Seeler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's also two walk-in, two items on personnel, which I guess you're gonna bring forward after executive session?
Yes.
Two more items. Jerry, you're on this. I don't have one tonight. Even I don't have one. Just wide enough here, whatever.
Now, there's gonna be, I'll, we'll get to that. Is any other business matters at this time that we choose to break forward?
One question. At the last meeting, I talked a little about the gang violence thing, and I was hoping we'd get some information brought forward to us.
We, we heard you, and we sought that information from everybody who attended the meeting, and nobody came away with information. So we're, we're going back to the sources who conducted the meeting, and we're attempting to get, in fact, whenever board member attended, we...
I can give you the name of the state police agent, that's in charge.
I think we got it, but it seems that we can't...
I thought I would use some information, everybody just take a look at it.
Yeah, and, and that's where we approached it.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Just before we go, there are two dates that I would like to bring to the board's attention. One is Thursday, June 12th, when our very own Luce Pepe is going to be honored by the scouting of Long Hill Township. And then very next day, we can be very busy that weekend. Friday, June 13th, is our dinner honoring our retirees at Martinsville Inn. Those of you who haven't gone, it's such a nice opportunity to meet with our staff. We as board members don't normally socialize, party, dinner, dine, whatever. So I've gone for many years, I've always enjoyed it. So that's, it's Friday, the 13th. Congratulations, Luce.
Congratulations. Thank you for the reminder. Any other business at this time? With that, we'll move on to second opportunity for public comment. Any public comment at this time? At this time, you can talk about any topic you'd suggest. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next topic. We're gonna move into executive session for discussing confidential matters that are governed by attorney-client privileges, negotiation items, as well as some personnel items. Attorney-client privileges, and other legal matters that my, the board has the right to discuss in executive session. And then we will, after that discussion, return back to public session, and at that time, there may be action taken.
Can I, just to ask a question, are we gonna have a residency hearing after that, when we come back?
No.
No?
That's not gonna happen. That'll be discussed in executive session. Okay. Can I get a motion?
So I move?
Second. Call is favored.
All right.
With that, we're in executive session. Turn the lights.
Make a motion, please.
Jerry has the floor.
Go ahead, Jerry. Do you do what you want. May I see Dr. Seeler, do you want to join us?
Making the motion.
You can release our...
Quick, she's leaving. Quick, she has to leave.
I'd like to vote, move item C16. I'll read it, because it resolves that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent withholds the employment increment, adjustment increment, and longevity payment, if any, of Brian Ford, according to NJSA, AT&amp;A 29-14 for the 2008-2009 school year, and, be it further resolved that the salary Mr. Ford for the 2008-2009 school year shall be the same he received for the 2007-2008 school year in the amount of $55,345.
Second.